Okay, so we are all here. And it is, what's the official time, 7:04. So I'll call the Wilton Board of Education July 23 special meeting to order. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda, all the board members?
Yes.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
Thanks, Glenn, second?
Second.
Thanks, Mandy, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Lucille, our comments from the public?
Yes, there are.
Okay, as I say to everybody's public comment, we will listen, take things seriously, but the board does not interact during the public comment. All right, so Lucille, can we hear it?
Yep, I have one public comment. Hello, my name is Marie Demasi and I live at 135 Mountain Road in Wilton. I have three children and while I know the safest decision is to distance learn, this will not benefit their mental health. I am also concerned with the idea of opening and closing. This lack of consistency will not benefit any child. I do hope we can make some hybrid kids go two days, distance learn, deep clean day, then other group goes two days. I know this state does not agree and I know this year will need some flexibility.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
No, nothing in the subject line labeled as public comment. We do get that you see a question, but not comment.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
All right, thanks Gretchen, second for the member, aye?
Aye.
opposed?
Sorry, no.
All right, thank you. Okay, good. Passed. All right, we'll dive right into the heart of the meeting then. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin, but I just want to tell everyone, if it's not already completely obvious, is that we are in the thick of it in the planning for reopening. These are very intense and busy and sometimes challenging times. We will hear updates and we'll hear a lot more details, but there are also a lot of details still to come. So I do want to thank the staff for all your hard work and I know it's going to continue. I'd also like to thank the parents and the community who have attended virtually or have sent us emails. Please know that we read each and every one of them and take them seriously and your input is valuable to us. There's a lot to discuss tonight. I also want to be cognizant that, as I said, the staff has been working so hard that I think that I would like to end no later than nine o'clock tonight. And even that might be, but I think we need to do our best. We could sit here, talk for hours about these topics, but we just are not going to be able to do that. Dive in and first update, or the update, you're in charge of that and I know you have several people you want to have speak, but if you could explain the outline for tonight. Kevin, you're on mute.
Yeah. How many is it going to take to master that? So first, thanks, everybody, you know, again, for your participation, your engagement and your thoughtful feedback as we've been moving through this process. We're still a long way from finalizing plans and that's really important for everyone on the call tonight and everyone in the community to understand. So just to rewind a bit, when we first started back in, you know, April, May, really thinking about reopening, you'll be reminded that we formed nine goal, nine goals and nine goal committees. And each one of those committees was tasked with a particular facet of reopening. And so tonight, we're going to hear from Fran Campar and Karen Brennicky and Trudy Denton, who are going to update you on our progress around, you know, curriculum and instruction. I also just remind you, and I'm going to be repeating this, you know, as we kind of move through various facets of the pieces of plan tonight, the state directed us to create, to submit to them due tomorrow, as you know, three plans. One plan is to have all students back full time. The second plan is a hybrid where some students would be in, some students would be learning remotely. And then the third plan is to have all students learning remotely. Even prior to the state kind of issuing those directives locally, we had agreed that we need a model of instruction and education that's going to do a couple of things. Number one, that's going to get us as close as humanly possible to delivering a typical day of school. And I know, you know, typical is off the table, but what I mean by that is a full day of rigorous instruction in all of the curriculum areas to the best extent possible that we can. So that was the first piece. The second piece was, as we were talking about this, we needed an approach that's going to allow us to move between those three models because we certainly, I think, can reasonably anticipate we're going to have some closures, we're going to have some kids who are going to be in and out, faculty who are going to be in and out. And so we need to be able to manage those variables. So what we're imagining, what we're starting with is kind of a base concept for most grades and this, you know, this may not pan out for every grade, but what we're thinking about as a base concept is organizing around live instruction. And we certainly heard from all of our families and a lot of our teachers that, you know, that need for live instruction, that need for direct contact between kids and their teachers was critically important to the success of teaching and learning. And so as a model, as a concept, we're building around that. So what we're proposing in very general terms and as, you know, the next week unfolds and the week after that unfolds, we hope to come back to you with some real clear descriptors of what it's going to look like. But, you know, at least at 10,000 feet, what we're proposing is a model of instruction where we know we're going to have kids in class. We also know we're going to have some portion of our student body at home. And so we're trying to set up a system that enables those students to be assigned to classes and to participate in the live instruction remotely. And so using Schoology as the foundational learning management system will get us a long way. We're also exploring different tools and techniques for how we can live video stream our classrooms and as well, thinking about the instructional model and really thinking carefully about what are those facets of instruction where you really need to be, have the teacher kind of on doing direct instruction, you know, what are those other pieces that can be done either independently or interdependently that you may not need a camera on? So a lot of organizational details and a lot of thinking going into that work, but that's the general model. So we'll come back at a later time and really dig into that more deeply as well as, you know, some other considerations that we have about, you know, whether or not that might be best for our youngest learners. So I just wanted to kind of paint the picture. Instructionally, Fran and Karen and Trudy will kind of walk us through, you know, what the staff have been up to in terms of building out those models and the curriculum. And then I asked Maria to take some time tonight to talk about, you know, where we are with our staffing, because that's another area that's really, we haven't talked a lot about yet in this forum. But there are many, many questions with staff members' ability to return to work and then how we're going to manage those folks who might be eligible for remote work, et cetera. And then, you know, because beyond that, you know, what our needs and how we might attempt to manage some of our substitute needs. So those are the two big pieces. And then the third piece that's under discuss and approve is the plan that I'm proposing to submit to the state tomorrow. So I'm going to take some time and I'll walk you through that. And some of those high level details, we talked about a week ago, so you'll just have to bear with me because I'm going to walk through those again and then we'll get into some of the nitty gritty of the plan. Sound like, and then we have to address the calendar. Okey dokey?
Kevin, how much do you think the state is going to change? Like, are you getting dates from the state of, we're going to get more updates on this date, on this date? Like, what are you hearing from this state as far as updates?
It's so, well, you know, interestingly, I just, tonight before we started, I got a document from the commissioner's office that was guidance on remote learning. It wasn't very helpful, but we have it. And they've been, you know, they've been, I think, pretty consistent in issuing documents. Some of what they put out is more germane and material to the big rocks we're trying to roll up the mountain, others less so. You know, I am told that guidance will continue to be forthcoming. There are some big questions that, you know, we've put back in front of the commissioner around, you know, these models and, you know, the efficacy of starting, you know, with everybody in person at every level. As all of you know, I've shared and you're going to hear me say it again tonight, I have a lot of concerns about bringing the high school back full time, just with respect to our ability to faithfully implement all of those mitigation strategies. So we've shared those concerns with the commissioner and his officers of the State Department. I continue to interact with superintendents around the state and send that message. And we don't really have any different response at this point, except the, you know, insistence that we be prepared to, you know, open full time for everybody.
Yeah. Kevin, can you clarify for me? Yeah, I read the, I guess, came out from the state a few days ago, that days where we're distant learning will not count toward the 180 days of the school year. I'm very confused by this. And they're saying that they want that as part of the second, as one of the plans that we're going to submit. It makes no sense to me whatsoever.
If you're asking me to interpret that, I'm with you. It's not, it's not a helpful piece of guidance. You know, the best I can tell you is, you know, per state statute, we're required to, you know, deliver 180 now.
Right. But they're saying that if you're distance learning, those don't count toward the 180 days.
I can't speak to that and I can't speak to, you know, what distance learning is looking like in, you know, districts across the state here. For what we're proposing is distance learning will be, you know, akin to what's happening, you know, live in the classroom. We're trying to make it as equitable as possible for kids who are unable to participate. So I really, I don't have another, any other additional information to share on that.
Okay, because I just, I read that and I thought, oh, wait a minute. How can you do that when you're telling us you want that as part of one of the plans we're going to submit to you?
Right.
All right, okay.
Great, all right. Fran, are you ready? Are you able to share your screen?
Yes. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, great. So good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to provide this update. What I'm doing with my co-presenters, Trudy Denton and Karen Brennicky, is presenting on our update to goals number two, three, and four, which are our learning management system, curriculum and assessment. And on behalf of Chuck Smith and Karen and Trudy and myself, I'd like to really thank first all the countless teachers and administrators that have been engaged in a tremendous amount of work in preparing for the start of the school year as part of these committees and as part of the curriculum work that's going on right now.
Hey Fran, just so you know, you're in presenter view. I don't know if that's the view you want to be in. You're not in slide view.
I'm going to stop it right now then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. So I wasn't even reading off my notes, as you can tell. All right, so I'm going to go on to our next slide. So for this presentation, I think it's really very appropriate that we start once again with our mission and vision for Wilton Public Schools. And as we reopen our schools, we're informed by the mission to create a rigorous learner-centered curriculum within a context that fosters health and wellness. Very, very appropriate for this time. This vision and mission guides us as we are either providing instruction to students accessing learning remotely or in person. The reentry committees that I spoke about, goals two, three, and four, which address learning management system, instruction and assessment are all very much connected. We began our work with the adoption and implementation of Schoology, as you all know and we have reported on. Our LMS system anchors our delivery of instruction and assessment within a consistent organizational structure, which is very important, as we hope that our students are able to go into Schoology and have a very consistent experience that will not be a barrier to their learning. We are also integrating the ability to use a variety of digital tools, integrated right within the platform, so that there are less clicks and it's easier for students to access all of the tools that they need. And we are adding Zoom, which is the platform we've been using as our video conferencing tool to Schoology, so that it is going to be accessible right within that system. Our update will also focus on all of the work that's happening throughout the district on curriculum and our plan for blended learning as this instructional model. So as I said, our learning management system has been the anchor of all our work as we're anticipating for multiple scenarios. This could, this will be in person, remote, and it may go to hybrid as well. As we begin our school year, some of the students will be learning remotely right from day one and we need to plan for that, as well as the students that we will have in front of us. We could anticipate intermittent closures that will bring us all online or potentially with some model of hybrid. What's been very, very important and very clear to me is that whatever system we use has to be adaptable and flexible. We need to be able to actually go right within one model to another without a lot of issues with that change. So Schoology will house our curriculum units and we'll have access to digital resources, but we'll also have assignments, assessments and discussions. Much of what will be done online, as an example, discussions will also be happening in the classroom. We've provided curriculum teams with a consistent structure to actually start with a template as they're creating their units and their content. And they have been getting support on translating the lesson design elements into that digital version, which would be using the right type of medium for the learning targets that are being addressed.
So our work began in planning for this year, as it always has with standards. We approach student learning by identifying those outcomes that are based on high leverage standards. In other words, we really take a look at what students need to be successful in the next grade or in the next course. In the course of our work with students, we monitor progress towards those learning objectives through in-classroom assessments, formatively and others. We provide support for students who've not yet mastered standards and we provide opportunities for extension for those students who are ready. Across the district, we will begin the year with what we're calling reentry units. These units may vary in length from grade to grade and across content areas. The goals of the units, however, remain the same. The units will provide teachers with information about student learning from last year. They will provide opportunities for teachers and students to learn how to engage in the Schoology learning management system. And they will allow teachers to set up instructional routines that will be utilized in person, in hybrid or in distance learning structures. The structures will also be set up to provide ongoing opportunities to connect with students in order to address social and emotional needs. The key to all of this work is, just as with the reentry units and throughout the year, we will align our lesson components with the instructional methods that are best suited for that setting. So we look at how to replicate things like discourse and collaboration using the discussion tool and Zoom. We look at providing opportunities for students to work independently on practice, on homework, and align those methods to each part of a lesson. As we've learned from parent and student surveys, live instruction is the cornerstone of our blended learning environment. We can achieve live instruction whether we're in person, whether we're in a hybrid mode or via video conferencing.
Karen, maybe on mute, I believe? No?
So sorry.
That's okay.
Summer Brain. The district assessment calendar is being developed with specific intentions. First, it prioritizes and guides the routine use of formative assessments to assist teachers in making the instructional decisions necessary to address gaps in learning, as well as to shepherd students toward mastery of skills and knowledge essential to the grade or course. Additionally, the assessment calendar will serve to identify students in need of support beyond the grade level curriculum. As we prepare for instruction following our extended closure from the spring, we continue to rely on decades of research about effective schools. Schools that are successful in preparing students for college and career develop a guaranteed curriculum with clearly articulated student outcomes. They communicate appropriate, specific and challenging goals and they prioritize standards that are the essential learning for a grade or course, so as to teach content deeply rather than cover content broadly.
So we're going to move on now to talk a little bit about supporting that blended learning model. And this graphic is really important because it really illustrates what is actually happening basically in school and it's all one school. So we are going to be in person, we're going to be remote and at times also hybrid. So the importance of blended learning instruction is that it's guided by three principles. The first is the continuity of learning. So what do we mean by that? So we need to design lessons that are accessible to all learners. With that in mind, we have to think about how are all learners, whether they're in front of us at the time or they're dialing in, so to speak, how are they going to access that instruction? So we may have live video instruction that students are dialing in, there may be discussions, assessments will be online as well as independent work. So as we talk about that idea of continuity of learning, whether we are one day in person and possibly the following day all online, we should be able to access and not have a interruption of learning, even though our routines will look very, very different than what we've been accustomed to in past years, of course. We will have set up also the second principle, which would be creating a community of learners. And it's really important that that class, whether students are in front of us or they're learning online, feel that connection. And connection is that second principle. The third is the fluidity, that ease from which we can go from in-person to remote and make that transparent to learners and teach them the skills and have them understand how to access the technical support if it's needed and to have questions answered, to have office hours, for example, posted and a variety of other ways that we can ensure that learning is fluid and can be accomplished in these very challenging times. So as we look at the types of things that are in process right now, summer projects are multifaceted this year. Unlike other years where they have been very much about the curriculum projects, this year, our teams are writing and translating reentry units and putting them in Schoology. They're writing the first academic units of the year, also for Schoology. We're incorporating new digital tools. I'm working with teams that are looking at things like virtual labs and manipulatives and different ways of, you know, teaching art and photography, where it may have been with shared materials in the past and ways to do that in a way that is going to still meet the needs and the learning targets that we have had in the past. Over the last two weeks, we've had project leader trainings to have project leaders prepared. Over 100 of our teachers participated in that. In addition, we have our LLC staff, both our library learning common staff and technology instructional leaders embedded within the actual curriculum teams, offering embedded PD and support as they're working. And as I said before, we've had our subcommittees, many people working on organizational structures, working on tutorials, FAQs, many support documents. And on the backend, along with Eric and his team, folks like Lori Ellis, who've been tremendous and lots of other people, we've been integrating a variety of different applications that our students will be able to access directly from Schoology. Right now, we're up to 42. As we talk about this coming year, I like this quote that we have here, that professional learning has never been more important as schools and districts design and implement in real time new models for learning during and after this pandemic. We feel that this is a huge priority this year and we're spending a lot of time and focus on our PD. We've completed training on foundational skills for using Schoology for 485 educators. As I said, we've been aligning our digital tools with blended learning and instructional strategies. And as we begin the school year, our calendar shows our commitment to prioritizing Schoology learning and delivering classroom instruction in this new way. In addition, we're working on parent and student modules. So what I wanted to do at this point is really to illustrate with a very short tutorial, well, not tutorial, but a demonstration of what we've been working on and what it actually looks like in Schoology. So this is really in the first phase and I want you to just kind of think of it as a work in progress, as everything that we're doing is at this point. So I'm in Schoology right now. In my dashboard, I have a number of different courses that I can access. I'm going to look at right now a demo course that I'm going to be using for tonight. As I open it up, and I would as a student, have a dashboard of similar number of courses that I could open up and access. I am immediately in the, what's called the update section that it defaults to and the teacher can use this, as I put it here, a sort of like their whiteboard where they're writing their learning targets, maybe reminders, and it's a space in that updates page where the teacher can direct the students to what they want them to do that particular day or week. And I am going to go through this because at this point, I'm just going to go to the materials here. So what I have for you is a couple of different sections. So this is in a sense, something that was developed by Eric Mendelson and Michelle Maher and, you know, the group at the high school, who've also, along with secondary, have very similar type of outline. The organizational structure for each of the courses has an introduction to the about the class with information about the teacher, contact information, office hours, et cetera. In addition, we have class resources and course essential documents, as they're called. In the secondary realm, we would have things like syllabus, we would have important websites, we might have links to textbooks and all the pertinent information that students would need to access throughout the year. In addition, what you'll see here is that there is a particular naming convention that we have established for the entire district, as a matter of fact. So it will look very similar and students going from class to class will be able to access and find the lessons and the activities for the day, for the week and easily participate. In this particular example, I can go to unit one, session two, for example, and I see all of the activities right here. One of the things that I like to talk about is that as students know their technology and learn their technology, there are things that they use in YouTube, for example, like playlists, where I can just hit the play button. And this is an example of what they might see as an assessment. And as they're going through this, you'll see that this is a simple assessment. And, you know, I'm going to go through multiple choice, there, you know, write-ins, short answers and a variety of different types of things that can be done within that assessment. As I go back to my unit one, session two, and I hit my next one, you'll see that I can playlist right through my assignments and I can go from one to the next, which is a really nice feature of this. I also wanted to show you that as we consider what this actually looks like in all of the different schools, it's obviously going to look different if we're looking at Miller Driscoll versus Cider Mill Middlebrook in the high school. In the lower grades, the homerooms obviously will have separate subject areas that will look more like a homeroom desk. that will look more like a homeroom desk. And as we were talking about, we are replicating what the classroom in-person looks like in this online version of it. And again, I can go into reading in this particular unit. There's a reentry unit. I have clarity of what the learning targets are for this, and as I go into it, you'll see that, again, I have that playlist that as I'm going through this and I am a Miller Driscoll student, I not only have more visuals, the type is bigger, but there's actually even a video recording of the lesson. So there are different ways that we're trying to make it so that it is accessible for every learner at every age level. This is one final piece I think I wanted to show you. This is basically what a lesson might look like. In this particular lesson, something that I'm more accustomed to, digital citizenship, you see that there's an essential question, and I have my, what students will be able to do, and it's very clear right up front what's going to be happening and what the expectations are. So I go into these, you'll notice that, and this is really important for me to explain, if the student is online, I would have the Zoom link right in here for the students to actually click on and access that content. If I am a teacher and I am in the classroom, I would, of course, be explaining, in this case, what are rings of responsibility. I would perhaps show a slideshow that has the information with the objectives and the content and explain that. If I am in class, I will watch my teacher do this. If I'm at home, I will watch my teacher do this. As I move forward and I go to my next piece of it, you'll notice that at this point, I have a discussion. In this discussion, I added a YouTube video, and I would show the YouTube video. And if I'm in class, I may have one of two options, may discuss with my classmates, but I may also go in and add what my response is right here. As a student at home, I can also add my discussion answer to this as well. So you see that what we're doing right now is we're trying to replicate and not make where the student is a barrier to learning. So essentially, that is really where we are right now. There is a lot of moving parts, as Kevin was talking about, and we will continue with our work in the next few weeks in developing all this curriculum.
Fran, quick question. As a parent, I was really excited when Kevin mentioned live video streaming. You entered the discussion by mentioning live instruction. Then I got a bit deflated going through Schoolology and talking about you would click this Zoom. Help me bridge that gap. So is Schoology an addendum to live instruction? Is our goal live instruction, and Schoology is helping? I just think that-
So it's, Schoology is a platform, right? So when you log into Schoology, it, in a sense, actually provides security for that live instruction. So you access Zoom through Schoology. We're integrating the upgrade to the educational version of Zoom for teachers, and it will be right in Schoology. So students and teachers would be accessing Schoology in order to access Zoom. Zoom would go on, and live video instruction would be happening right through Schoology.
Got it. So our goal is still, if we have remote learning, some sort of live instruction.
That's correct.
Make that really clear.
That's correct. Thank you for asking that question.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Fran, I have a question about our Miller Driscoll students. We don't typically give them a Chromebook. Are we offering Chromebooks to families who need them?
Yes, and Eric can speak to it. The purchases, and I think some of the Chromebooks, that has been completed. First graders are all going to be getting Chromebooks. Go ahead, Eric.
Yes, we'll have Chromebooks in first and second grade at Miller Driscoll.
Okay, thank you.
Fran, I think part of the reason, you know, Mandy mentioned getting a little discouraged about, you know, when seeing the computer piece. So I don't think we can emphasize enough the fact how different online learning will be from last spring. You know, when we did it, you know, certainly in a hurry with, you know, the best we could, and teachers pulled off miracles in many places. But now the online learning will be much more interactive, as I understand it, will be much more live. We're going to follow the curriculum, you know, the, I don't know, normal or typical or whatever it is, however you want to put it, curriculum, you know, emphasizing, you know, the leverage standards, et cetera. And so these are tools to help us move from the classroom, or if we have to be home for a day, or, you know, whatever the schedule is. So the video cameras from the classroom, I love it because it keeps the teacher at the center. And so it's like the teacher has the kids in front of him or her, but also has the kids that, you know, are on a computer screen, which isn't like the most ideal, but it's so much better than not having that. And then to be able to see it in real time, I think, is just great. And I know that there are all sorts of challenges to getting there, including all the technical stuff. So I guess, Eric, my question would be, you know, do we have the bandwidth? What about cameras? What about sound? What about kids' connections at home? All that sort of stuff to make sure that it's stable enough, unlike my internet connection right now.
Our internet connection inside the district is strong enough and robust enough to support all the technology we have in the district. So we should be in good shape in district. For students that had connectivity issues, we worked with them in the spring, and we will continue to work with students that have connectivity issues in the fall or staff members with connectivity issues to resolve those. So for devices, we have devices from grade one through grade eight for students if they need devices at home.
I guess I have a question as well, just or maybe a clarifying question. So we talked about this being the system regardless of where we are and that live kind of instruction being what orientates the model, and I would presume-
Is it just me? Because I can't hear.
Ruth, we lost you.
We lost you, Ruth.
We lost you, Ruth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're bad. Yeah.
Okay. I was just asking that, you know, we're, a lot of this is kind of, it's live, and we're also pivoting around the classroom. But if we're all in a completely remote situation, are we still, you know, is the live orientation regardless of whether there's a classroom to pivot around?
Yeah, so I think a way to conceptualize it, and certainly Karen kicking away in here, is as we've been thinking about the instructional model, you know, what are those essential components within a lesson that needs to direct, right? So that's the live piece. And then really trying to leverage the power of Schoology to do a variety of things, to give kids the opportunity to collaborate, to respond, to, you know, interact. Schoology also creates a record of all of the learning for kids, so it's a great reflection tool. And so just, you know, it enables us to manage those pieces. But I think, you know, we all understand that, you know, learning happens best when teachers teach, and, you know, teachers are teaching live. So whether, you know, we're all sitting in our dining rooms or in the classroom, that's it's the, it is the key piece, as Fran highlighted, of the model that we're developing here.
Kevin, can you just confirm that the future of online learning work will not be optional? Because I know this is something that I've heard multiple times.
Yeah, thanks again, man. You're asking some great questions, and if you don't mind, I'll just take a minute. So, you know, as Debbie referenced, you know, the spring, you know, we learned a great deal, and I refer to, you know, kind of that episode as emergency e-learning, you know, because we were thrust into it, we were home, and we were really building as we were moving along. And our teachers really, you know, were remarkable in their responses. So, you know, from February, March, April, moving forward, we've been thinking about how we can refine this and make this better. And so as I said at the start, you know, we're planning on having school. And so, you know, I'm talking, you know, pretty close, if we're all remote, to full school days, if not full school days. We will be delivering our curriculum. You know, Schoology will be the repository. You saw all of the various organizational features. So a lot of the feedback we got from kids and parents about Google Classroom and the difficulty of navigating, you know, now it's a standard platform across grades, across classrooms. So, you know, some of that goes away. As Fran mentioned, there's a common naming convention. So again, organizationally, that'll be easier. The parent portal into Schoology will enable support for kids, particularly younger kids at home, because parents can also see due dates and activities, if there are live sessions, or when there are live sessions going on, all of those things. So, you know, it just increases the level of support and opportunity. We have to really deliver cohesive instruction. So along those same lines, if we're going to be delivering as full a curriculum as we can, then there'll certainly be, you know, assessment opportunities and obligations. We will be providing grades and feedback. Students will be required to attend, whether it's virtually or in person, attendance will be recorded. And so, you know, all of those pieces that are in place in a typical school, you know, we're going to try to put in place in this blended model.
Yeah, I just think it's important. Every 10 minutes, we just say, you know, our goal is live, real time. We're not accepting lower standards, and work is not optional because in all the, and, you know, Deb mentioned, we read every single email, and we keep hearing that theme. So I just think it's important that we keep saying that is our goal.
That's correct.
All right, so this, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jen.
If we don't have it yet, how do we get our union and all of our teachers behind this thought?
You know, we're, so as, you know, Fran demonstrated before, 485 or so of our instructional staff, our teachers, have participated in at least the first round of Schoology. You know, so I would say, you know, folks are coming along. Another additional 100, you know, of that group also trained this summer as curriculum project lead. So, you know, I don't, please make no mistake, our teachers are invested. There are concerns, and they're reasonable concerns because this is brand new. So Maria and I have been meeting with the president of the WEA and his representative, the representatives, the CEA every week, and, you know, we're having really good, open conversation. I think, you know, rightfully so, some of us have been completely steeped in this model building for three months now, and that's all we're doing is thinking about it. And, you know, we can't say that's true for all of our staff members. So, you know, naturally, they're going to have questions. I think, you know, as we're thinking about what and how we prioritize, you know, as we've discussed many times, we start with the health and safety considerations of everybody. And then we move on to, you know, our obligation, our commitment to deliver a really high-quality instruction. As we're entertaining that and thinking about all of those various scenarios, whether it's hybrid in-person, fully remote, and then the related variables about, you know, kids who may be participating itinerantly because they have an exposure or something, we have to have a model that allows us to move, you know, to account for all of that. And so, you know, I feel very confident that our staff will come along. And, you know, quite, I think, not only will they come along, but as, you know, more and more of them look at what we're trying to do and looking at the way we're trying to go about it, you know, they're going to commit their own thinking to it, and we'll probably come up with better ways to do it than what we're thinking about right now. But at the end of the day, our commitment remains the same. You know, it's that we're going to deliver high-quality instruction in a full school program.
Kevin, I have a question perhaps, you know, to Fran or Eric. We are probably not the only community in this country that has adopted Schoology. As a company, are there any concerns about Schoology's ability to support what we're trying to do when every community in the country has gone to them at all?
So, yeah, that's an excellent question, Glenn. Many, many districts have been going with Schoology. You can probably imagine getting a learning management system has been really high on the priority list of just about everyone. Schoology and Canvas are the two big top ones. Schoology probably coming up on top. What I'm, I feel good about is that Power School is actually the parent company, has a very, very, you know, wide net in terms of the number of people and support people that it has. Wilton also has purchased the support package that allows us to get essentially 24/7 access to any support person for any of our teachers all week long. So we do have lots of things in place. And, you know, they have thus far, you know, good and responsive. We will be working with them in the next week on doing essentially what's the sync between Power School and Schoology to bring over classes and all of that, and we'll get a better sense of how we're doing at that point. But so far, we've been happy. We've done a lot. I mean, this is the kind of thing that normally takes a good year to implement. And just the idea that this is, you know, where we are right now and how much has already been done is a testament to everybody that's been working on it, as well as the folks at Schoology that have helped us get this far.
Yeah, I went through it the earlier, some, a couple of months ago, when you sent out the information on Schoology. It does seem like a fantastic platform for us to be using, both for parents and students. But I'm just concerned with the entire country going to it. Are they, about their ability to continue to support us to the level we need? But if you're saying, you're worried, that's, that was the question, that's all.
Kevin, I'm going to interrupt and just point out that it is 10 to 8, and I don't know how much more you want to cover in the updates, so I'm just warning you on the time.
Great, we have a lot to cover. So I think what I would say, just to wrap up this portion, and I know, you know, Mandy, to you, the questions and the comments you've made and everybody else about the instructional pieces, I think, you know, as parents and people are listening at home, I want to just, you know, repeat, you know, we are having school, and it is not going to look like emergency e-learning. And so we're developing tools, we're developing models, you know, as we meet and continue to move forward here in the next set of days, in a couple of weeks, we'll really come back with, hopefully be able to paint a clearer picture of what that's going to look like and, you know, really inspire some further confidence in people. But, you know, just know that that's our commitment, that's how we're moving forward. At this point, I want to turn it over to Maria, and she's going to just update us on kind of the faculty survey and some of the challenges, you know, that we're confronting there as we're looking at staffing and how we're continuing to manage there in this environment.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm not sure if I could share my screen. Am I a co-host?
Here, I'm going to change it so panelists can share, so you should be able to share.
I did make you a co-host.
Okay, great. Okay, can everyone see that? So I wanted to, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to provide an update on the recent staff survey that we administered to all staff across the district that just closed last Friday evening. And it was a very short survey to try to assess whether or not staff members plan to return at this point in the fall, based on what they know and based on any concerns that they may have. And so I wanted to just share a breakdown of the information that we have at this point, knowing that the situation is very fluid, and people are still in a state of uncertainty as to whether or not they're going to return. There are a number of variables that I'll talk about this evening. But I did want to share this really as one set of data points as we continue our planning for the reopening of school. So as you take a look at this, we had 382 respondents, and most of those were teaching staff. We have just under, we just have actually just about 400 teachers. And so our response rate was actually very good. When we look at this, we can see that in the light blue, the number of staff that said that they may not be returning, those are classified staff. And then the dark blue are actually certified staff. So those are teachers, school counselors, occupational physical therapists, and so on.
And what's classified?
Classified staff includes secretarial staff, paraprofessionals, our campus supervisors. But the largest group within that is the paraprofessional staff. But the largest group within that is the paraprofessional staff. So these are our classroom aides, often that work with students with special needs or support some of our general classroom needs.
And just to clarify, Maria, these are staff who are saying, I am not returning? Or these are staff who are saying, I'm concerned with returning?
So these are staff that are saying they may not return.
And what are you going to ask them for more concrete?
So we're sending it, we're going to be sending out some more information tomorrow to staff, just about some different options and some of their legal rights as they relate to requests for accommodations and leaves and things like that. And a week after that, we're going to send another survey. So the week of August 3rd will be our next survey that will give staff some more time to explore their options, you know, perhaps consult with their families and their physicians, get a little closer to the start of the school year so they have a better sense of what situation is within the state in terms of infection rates and things like that. And I believe that they'll have a better sense of whether or not they're going to have challenges with returning. So this was, you know, one set of data points to help guide us in our planning, but we know that it's a very fluid situation and this is subject to change. I'm going to share a little bit more information to tell you why I'm not confident that this is really reflective of the actual number of people that may not be returning. I actually think that this over reports the number of staff members that may not be returning.
Can I ask a question? If I'm reading this correctly, for instance, at the high school, it looks like 32 or perhaps certified staff, teachers, counselors, et cetera, might not return. But what's the total number for the high school?
That is the total number. That might not return.
No, no, the total number of the staff.
Oh, 122.
All right. So I'm reading 32 out of 122 might not return.
Yeah. So actually, as we look across, Miller Driscoll staff is about a third. It's about 30, 35%, just over a third. And then the other three schools are about 25%, a quarter of the staff.
And Maria, really quickly, so the next survey is August 3rd. So do you think, say, by August 15th, you'll have a clear understanding of exactly who and who is not returning?
I think we'll have a much clearer sense. You know, we're going to stress to people that it will be important for us to know. So we're going to ask them to, you know, let us know by the end of that week. We're just going to keep it open for one week. But really, you know, there's never a point at which that closes. You know, a person can decide at the very last minute that he or she may not be returning. So as much as we're going to stress, you know, the urgency of this, we know that there may be people who are really wrestling with the decision. I think that the decision to return for many of our teachers and many of our staff members is a very difficult one. I believe very firmly that our staff members are very committed to their kids. They're very hardworking. They want to be on site. And their reasons for potentially not returning are, you know, reasons related to health concerns or childcare, things like that. And I think they're not things that they take lightly. So I think this is a very difficult decision for many that they're really struggling with. And I've heard already from a number of teachers who've said, I want to be on site. I want to be working directly with our kids. I wish that we could be in a situation like that and, you know, that I could feel company. I'm talking, you know, as if I'm a teacher, that I could be comfortable with my health situation or, you know, my spouse's health situation. But I think these are very difficult decisions for a number of our staff members right now. And I think that only through educating them about their rights and educating them about the numerous precautions that we're going to be taking as a school district, can people make a more informed decision about what they're going to do as they return.
What does, you know, not return mean? Does that mean a leave of absence? Does that mean a resignation? Like what does that, what does that mean?
It can mean a lot of different things. So, you know, there are staff members that may be requesting accommodations through the Americans with Disabilities Act. And, you know, the requirement for employers to provide accommodations for staff members who have qualifying disabilities is that we provide reasonable accommodations to the extent that those accommodations do not present an undue hardship to the school district, to the employer. And so I would imagine that there may be some staff members that request the accommodation of being able to teach remotely. And it'll be our decision as a school district as to whether or not we have remote work to provide. And if we don't, that may be because the remote work may present an undue hardship to us. Those are things that we're really working through right now as a staffing committee. The other piece is if a staff member does not have the option of remote work, would the staff member have the option of taking a leave of absence? Those leaves of absence are not automatically guaranteed. Those have to be approved by the school district. There's also, you know, there are factors that come into play with leaves of absence, like having to fill the position, having the staff member continue with our benefits plan, which is a cost to the district. So if a person has an unpaid leave of absence, we may not be paying the salary, but we may be paying the benefits if the person is on the benefits plan. So there are a number of factors that go into play. Also hiring for a person who's on a leave of absence can sometimes be more challenging because we may be hiring for a long-term substitute or a one-year position and people are less likely to leave their certified, you know, contracts in other districts for short-term positions. So there are a number of factors that go into play with us actually approving those kinds of things. But sure, that's a possibility for some staff members. There are some staff members who may decide to resign or retire. You know, we've already had a few staff members do that. And, you know, they've shared just with me in our conversations that, you know, they'd prefer to take risks coming into a school site or a work site. You know, they're taking their own precautions, even in their own lives at home now, and prefer not to come into a work environment. So there are a number of different possibilities. Leave of absence, possibly remote work if it's available, resignation, and some things in between. So.
You said, you said these numbers might be over reporting. Do you want to just explain that for a minute?
Yes. So I'd like to just share the reasons that staff members provided. They weren't actually required to provide reasons, but some did. And we see 38 of the staff members said that their reasons for possibly not returning would be related to childcare. So we had a number of, all these staff members said things like, well, if schools are open, then it will be fine. But if my child's school or daycare center is not open, that could be problematic. We had four staff members say that, you know, they're concerned about their own age or a family member living in the house who may be at a higher risk based on his or her age. One said that the person was concerned about safety in just the workplace related to the virus. Seven said that they had individual medical or a family member that had a medical issue. And then 65 didn't share a reason. They weren't required to. You know, I believe that some of the 65 may have had childcare issues. And I just based that on the fact that we had 78 respondents in our spring survey who said that they would take advantage of childcare if we offered it. So I think childcare is a big factor. And if school districts are open and daycare centers are open, that eliminates at least a third of this pool. And then I think as people learn what their rights and options are, they may decide to come in. And as they learn about all of the different precautions that we're going to be taking as a school district, they may decide that they do feel comfortable coming in. You know, I think there's, so there's comfort in things that are certain and known. And I think we can take comfort in the fact that we are going to be wearing masks. You know, we do have very stringent cleaning protocols that we're going to have in place. We're going to require self-monitoring for staff and students. We're going to have a very clear protocol for if a person is exhibiting symptoms of illness. And we saw that, you know, just this past week with, you know, something that arose with our ESY program and our very immediate response with that. So I think as people learn more about how we are going to create safer environment, they may feel more comfortable and less likely to remain home or request a leave of absence.
Let's hope so. Yeah.
We hope so. We do. And I really, I just want to say again, I know people want to come to work. I know I've had the privilege of working with many of our teachers across the district as a teacher myself and an administrator in three of the buildings. And I know people really want to come to work. So people who are expressing these concerns are genuinely fearful or have, you know, issues that make them question whether or not they're going to be able to.
Maria, have you guys had an opportunity to think more about childcare on site?
We have, you know, we've had some conversations with Dolores Tufariello from Wilton Continuing Education. She's the director of continuing ed. And she, I think, is very resourceful and very open and is open to hiring additional childcare staff if we need it. I think the biggest barrier at this point will just be space. You know, right now, we're thinking about how we're going to accommodate all of our students or however many students come to school each day while also adhering to our social distancing protocols. And so we have to prioritize that before we think about bringing in additional children. But it is something that we're still open to. And Dolores and I have spoken about some strategies for hiring additional childcare staff. She's really ready to work with me on that. And I think it remains something that we're going to consider pursuing. However, looking at the situation statewide and recognizing that schools are projected to open, I think it's going to be less of a need. So I also wanted to just give you a sense of the breakdown of staff members across each school that reported that they may not be able to return to work, just to give you a sense of the potential impact. And I want to be clear that, you know, we, we, we made some of the groups larger because in cases where groups were very small, we didn't want to identify the specific staff members that may have said there, that, you know, there may be concerns. So there are some groups that, you know, for example, related services that lump together services like occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech and language pathology, you know, our specials are art, music, PE, library, media, you know, interventionists could include instructional coaches as well. So those are groups that incorporate often a number of different titles. But this gives you a sense across the schools of the different roles that, you know, may be impacted if teachers are not able to come to work in mid-August.
Maria, the numbers are each individual teacher or person? So there's two world language people at the Wilton High School and five paraprofessionals?
Yes. That's exactly right.
Yeah. This is a very telling page because I'm concerned. We know that the younger children are not, or I guess what we think we know are not susceptible. But I'm really concerned about the number of elementary teachers at both Sodomilla and Miller Driscoll that have said no, that they don't plan on coming back. That's a big hit in those two schools.
Yeah. And just to be clear, they've said they may not come back.
Yeah.
You know, we, that was the way that the survey was phrased. And I think the next survey is going to be more definitive than that. You know, we just wanted to try to get a sense from people early on, but this next one is going to be more, you know, at this point, are you planning on returning or not?
Okay.
And, you know, really creating a sense of urgency for people, knowing that there's still the possibility that, you know, days before school starts, people may make that very difficult personal decision not to return.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions about this slide? Okay. Okay. So I have a happy slide. I'm going to end on a positive note. Okay. So I wanted to share, one of the things that we think about is our strategy for trying to support the needs of students and our staffing needs as we, you know, confront the possibility of having staff members not return. I do believe that while this number is probably an over-representation of our actuals, we will have some staff members who aren't going to return in the fall for various reasons. And so we have to think about how we're going to leverage the staffing resources that already exist in our district. And one of the things that we've done is to identify all of the additional certifications held by staff currently in the district. So we have nearly 400 staff and additional 250-plus certifications held by our staff members. Of those, about 20 are held by substitute teachers and paraprofessional staff, which I think is just reflective of the very talented people that we have in non-certified roles or at least roles that don't require certifications. But you can see here, our most common secondary certification is administrative. We have 37 staff members that hold the administrative certification. 34 hold elementary certification as a secondary cert. And 26 have the remedial reading and language arts certification. But then we have smatterings, you know, across many of the other certification areas. And within our substitute teaching pool, it's really quite varied. We have special education, elementary, math, secondary, English, and a number of others. So what we're doing now is really trying to identify what we might do if we have last-minute vacancies that are not immediately filled. We are in the process of assigning building substitutes to each of the schools. And the way that building substitutes work is that they're assigned daily. So they report to the school site every day and they are guaranteed work each day in the classrooms. We are ensuring that every building has at least one person with a certification so that if we needed someone in a certified role, we'd have at least one. The state does not require a person to have certification in the subject area that he or she is teaching until 40 days of continuous instruction. That's not our standard. But if we had an emergency situation and we needed a substitute to fill in, the certification requirement would not come into play until 40 days of continuous teaching. And, you know, I want to be clear, a lot of our substitutes are highly accomplished people with, you know, we have one who has a doctorate in chemistry and people who have had very successful careers in business, you know, former schoolteachers and administrators. So we have a very accomplished substitute pool that we're continuing to build. On a daily basis, we have additional interviews scheduled throughout the rest of the summer. And so we are really focusing on that as an opportunity for us. We're also looking at our cafeteria aides and our Wilton Continuing Ed childcare staff to see if there are opportunities there. And so, you know, we have reason to be, I want to say optimistic because I think we all need to be optimistic. Certainly, prospect of not having a number of staff members prior to starting the school year is a scary one in light of the fact that, you know, people's reasons for not returning are personal and based on the pandemic. And for that reason, I think it may be challenging to find replacements. However, I do know there are many people who have expressed interest in coming to work for our school district. And so we're continuing to pursue those opportunities and are hopeful that we're going to have a number of new staff members that we can welcome on board for the fall.
Have you considered retirees, recent retirees?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up. In fact, we're going to be reaching out to our, we, I think I shared this at a board meeting within the past year or two, that I hold exit interviews every, every year with anyone who's exiting the district. And when I meet with our retirees, I always try to solicit them to come work for us as substitutes. So we already have a number of our retirees working for us. And we've pulled the list of anyone who is not and anyone who has not moved out of state. And we're going to be reaching out to them to see if they can come work for us either as tutors or as substitute teachers. So absolutely, that's something that we're going to be pursuing.
Maria, this is going to sound like a joke, but it's really not. I cannot tell you how many parents I've spoken to who are certified teachers and they're like, what do I need to do? It's sort of like that, you know, during World War II was like, we're ready, what do we need to do? We want to come help. So it's unbelievable how many parents have reached out saying they want- So it's unbelievable how many parents have reached out saying they want.
I know, and I think that's amazing. I had a parent recently reach out to me who, um, had been a professor, you know, he taught as an adjunct professor and had just really impressive credentials. So, you know, we welcome people to apply online. We have, um, an open position for substitute teachers and I would welcome anyone who's interested in town to, to apply for that. We also have other open positions for, you know, um, childcare and things like that. And if a person is just curious about opportunities, please have the person email me. And I'm happy to give, uh, anyone a call and talk through the different opportunities that we have. I really think there are ways that we can utilize the incredible talent that we have in the district. And, um, I'm happy to talk through different opportunities with people who are interested.
Okay, thank you. Um, and one more thing we might be able to do, am I right? Is that, um, at least at the high school, there might be teaching by section by section. So if we lost a teacher, uh, especially a part-time teacher, there may be other teachers that might be able to pick up another class. Is that something? Okay.
Yes, that, that is an option. You know, we, the high school has, um, probably the most part-time teachers in the district too. Or we might have someone that's, you know, 80% or, you know, 75%. So there are sometimes, um, very easy ways to increase someone's, um, full-time status. And then there are teachers that sometimes take what we call overages, so they can teach an additional course during a free period or things like that. Naturally, those kinds of things have, um, budgetary implications. But if, if they're, they're taking these overages because someone has left and we haven't refilled those positions, then it's typically budget neutral.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll look forward to the next survey and, um, again, hopefully these numbers of, um, people contemplating will come way down.
I hope so. I really hope so.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So I want to just seize on that segue of budgetary implications to talk a little bit about the, um, costs that were compiled. So unfortunately.
Kevin, I think we're losing you.
Kevin, we're losing you?
Frozen.
On the next one.
Thought it was me.
Yeah, does he know we can't hear him, Deb, at all?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'll text him. And I, and I know Ann is unable to join us to talk about the budget specifics. So let's give Kevin a couple of minutes to get back on. But, um, I'm looking at the, the agenda and, um, as we wait for Kevin, I'm just gonna take the prerogative and let's get a couple of business-y things out of the way, if you don't mind. It's kind of like intermission here for a minute. There are some meeting dates, um, item E3, that are just like traditional meeting dates. So can I have a, um, a motion to approve those?
Some moved.
Those are our meeting dates. All right. Thank you, Mandy. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. So we got that out and I see Kevin. Kevin, are you back?
Back, sorry about that. The, uh,
No worries.
The, uh, I start to talk about the implications and my internet runs away scared. So, um, it happened again. Um, so my lights are flickering. I don't know what's going on up here in North Wilton tonight.
Yeah.
So, uh, just i- i- in a nutshell, I'll top line it for you and then, um, know that when, uh, people to join us, we'll get into the, um, more granular details. But, um, a large chunk of that, um, is really tied to, um, additional staffing. So I think I shared with, uh, the board already that in order to, um, meet the Department of Public Health, uh, cleaning and sanitizing guidelines, we will need to hire additional custodians. Um, we're looking at about $430,000, uh, in salary to pick up about seven additional custodians to manage those, um, those cleaning requirements. In addition to that, uh, we are going to have additional certified, uh, as well as classified FTE needs. Uh, and so, um, we have a proposal from the middle school right now, uh, for, uh, one and a half certified FTE. And that's to hire an additional, uh, world language teacher, um, as well as to, um, augment the, um, FTE of an additional PE teacher. And the, um, rationale behind, um, those hires is really to better manage our ability to cohort students uh, in classrooms and on teams. And so we can limit the, um, amount of mixing that, uh, currently takes place. We're also going to have, um, you know, additional staffing needs, uh, just, you know, in regard to campus supervision, um, both at the high school and at Middlebrook. Um, we're going to need, uh, because we'll be eating, uh, lunches in the classrooms, we'll need, uh, supervision for lunches. Um, and then for, you know, other periods during the day in the hallway to help, um, promote social distancing. We're, have been working with a company, um, to manage, uh, and plan for, uh, foot traffic flow through the building as well as, um, all of the necessary signage. We're looking at about $60,000 across the district to manage all of those costs. We are also, um, as we've talked about before, um, working on ideas to, um, you know, access the outdoors. And so one of the concepts was to purchase a few tents for each of the schools. Um, you know, certainly at Middlebrook, we could, uh, provide some tents and set them up in the courtyards. So we address all of our security concerns. But the tents, um, are about $34,000. We have put together an order for, um, additional PPE and, uh, hand sanitizing stations because we'll have hand sanitizing stations outside all of our school entryways, as well as in every classroom and throughout the building. Uh, we're looking at an estimate there of about $122,000. We're also, um, we, we're going to need to purchase some furniture. And so, um, we have an estimate right now for, um, to re-outfit our kindergarten classrooms. If you've been in those classrooms, you'll recall, um, presently they're outfitted by, um, three-foot square tables. And, um, under normal circumstances, we'd have four kids at those tables. And so now we need to have, um, you know, standalone desks or tables that are big enough to separate kids by, um, at least three feet. So I have an estimate of about, um, $40,000 for additional furniture. We also, there are, you know, all kinds of things we're still trying to factor in. The high school is still working on its sectioning, um, as we talked about last week, and I'll repeat again later on in the, uh, meeting. Our room sizes are about 900 square feet. And so, um, you know, we're limited is we're trying to manage those different social distancing requirements. We're limited to how many students we can have in a classroom. And so, uh, at the high school, there are a number of places where we need to, uh, create additional sections. And so there's an FTE, FTE implication there as well. And then there are other incidentals, um, around the lunch program. And so, um, if we're having lunch in the classrooms, we need to, um, purchase additional garbage cans and things like that. So, um, what I'm imagining is, you know, uh, some expenditures, um, in that range that I just described. Some smaller portion of that we'll need to spend upfront, certainly on the supplies, furniture, et cetera. Other costs like salary, um, will be spread across the year. Um, and then we're working on this strategy to, um, recover some of those costs. So, um, the first strategy is to take advantage of all the reimbursement opportunities we have. Fran, uh, excuse me, Ann had submitted, um, in the last couple of days, um, a reimbursement, um, of $400,000 to FEMA. Um, of that, if they approve everything, we're eligible for 75% of that back. Um, and so, um, we hopefully will hear very soon. Um, and then we'll move on to, um, the state funds that are available. You know, we're also hoping that, you know, the movement in Washington will, um, financially support, um, districts trying to cover this. We have, um, we're, you know, al- always back in our budget and really looking to, um, manage, um, purchases and really, you know, again, looking at the, um, what we've planned for and then just reevaluating, um, do we need to reprioritize? So, um, I think the final piece is, um, once we have a clear reconciliation, um, whatever that gap is, we may need to go back to, uh, the Board of Finance and request, uh, charter authority to cover, um, whatever's outstanding. And so we'll have a clear sense of that as we get into, uh, you know, probably mid to late September, October. But I'll, I'll stop there and, uh, just let you know, this is expensive. We've got, I think, a strategy in place and, uh, when Ann is back, you know, she can take us through all the real, um, significant details.
Kevin, two things. Your wifi, we heard you all, but your wifi seems to be slowing down. So you might want to have the number ready to call in in case we lose you totally. But, um, if, if, if for some crazy reason, we're not able to go back to school and we have all these janitors, do we have options? If we have no kids actually physically in the school and we've hired all these new janitors?
And we would hire them, um, you know, they would be on, um, I think, short-term contracts. And so if we didn't need them, then we would, um, lay them off. Is that correct, Maria?
Yeah. So what we would probably look to do is hire them, um, as substitute custodians or short-term custodians. Uh, and we have a period of 120 days to keep them on as substitutes before they actually become full-time employees. So that's a good window for us to actually test the model and make some decisions about what our needs are long-term.
And then Kevin, one of the highlights in the local news was, uh, spending a million dollars on bus monitors. Can you just re-clarify that that is not our plan?
That is not our plan. Right. It's, uh, I mean, cost prohibitive to proceed and I also think unnecessary. So I think what we do have to talk about, and, uh, Marie and I have been talking about some ways to, that we might be able to accomplish this. If we think about, um, you know, first of all, there's going to be diminished ridership on our buses. You know, we, we heard very clearly from most parents that they're going to be driving their kids. Um, so that's an important factor to consider. And then, you know, who actually would require, um, bus monitors? By my thinking tonight, um, our youngest students, you know, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, might require some additional supervision assistance at the very start of the school year, um, just to help, um, reinforce the routines. But I also think, you know, that the principal's been thinking about this and they're, you know, working on, um, social stories and things like that. So we'll be providing, um, some training videos and that kind of information to parents to help prepare kids. And then, you know, we'll do the same thing in schools, but, um, we're not spending a million dollars on bus monitors.
Thank you.
That was not then a state requirement as they originally said, correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay.
So, uh, if, in terms of, uh, D1, um, that's, um, that's the end of that portion of the agenda item. And so, um, the next would be, um, U1, um, reviewing the district plan that's going to be submitted to the state.
Yeah, that, that's fine. And before we lose you, we should probably take advantage of your screen if you want to take, take us through, through that. Some of it we have seen before, um, and certainly the reopening committee, I think, has seen part of it too. Am I right?
That's correct. Um, so what I'd like to do, you want to start with your, the, um, the cover letter that you prepared?
Uh, yeah, if you have it. Um, I just want to make sure that I'm clear to everybody, um, on the board or listening is that, um, when we vote tonight, it is not to approve a single model. It is not to approve a particular, um, decision or schedule or anything like that. But we are concerned as a district, um, hearing Kevin's concerns about, um, some of the challenges of, uh, presented by the high school in particular. So the state, I think Glenn, you brought this up for somebody earlier. The state, you know, also came out with sort of that memo last week that says, um, days that are not, you know, full-time of the model that we want to get to, we will not be able to count, we won't count it for you. So we're gonna push back a little bit. Um, I'm gonna propose that we push back a little bit and I want to see the board reactions. But basically, we are approving the descriptions tonight of the three different plans. And in Kevin's document, there are multiple details and he will be able to describe many of them. And then there are some that are still in the works and that's okay. That is true of all districts. So we will most probably approve the, the document that he shares with us. But I wanted to propose that we add our own introduction that says that, you know, as we approve this submission to the state, that we are not approving or endorsing the specific scenarios to be implemented in the Wilton Public Schools. So we're not agreeing on a plan. We're not saying yes, you know, full open is, is definitely the way we're doing. We are not there yet. We are not ready to make that decision. The second point, um, points out, you know, the different schools on our, in our district. And one, we want to take the approach that we will take the three scenarios, the hybrid, the full open, um, and the full close and decide, site by site, school by school, which we feel, the board feels, best matches the student health and safety needs at each individual school. So we're, we want to kind of avoid the one-size-fits-all assumption. We want to be able to break our district down into different schools and say, okay, which scenario makes the most sense at each of those levels based on health and safety needs. And we're doing that because, one, there's, um, more recent medical research that has concluded that there are differences based on the ages of, of kids as to how susceptible and/or to what degree they transmit COVID-19. We also have some facilities, and we'll talk about the high school, Kevin can certainly talk about that, where we have more challenges than others in trying to, um, implement sufficient and effective mitigation strategies. And also, if we do a case or a school-by-school approach and perhaps, um, we determine that we can't do a full open immediately for one or more sites, this allows us, it doesn't cut off anything, but it allows us the opportunity to phase in or ramp up, um, as we feel things are working out. So all of this was prompted, um, or started by the concerns, uh, of, uh, about safety for a full open for our older students. The best examples I can give you come just from the high school at this point. There may be, maybe, um, and we can talk about other sites, but for now, let's just focus on the high school. For instance, the high school does not support forming cohort groups and that's a mitigation strategy taken off the table. We try to, as a mitigation strategy, sort of confine contained students to different portions, you know, certain portions of the building. That is impossible as students at the high school move between classes. They go through the entire building several times a day. At our high school level, as Kevin reported, we can, you know, we can, we have a limit to our class size. But that's, um, with our goal of maintaining three feet of social distance, which is different from the more often touted one for, uh, that we've heard so much about is six feet. So that creates a challenge. Um, and our school day is six and a half hours long approximately. And of course, it's held mostly indoors. And yes, we can go out and use tents occasionally and all of that, but that's not reliable, dependable, or comprehensive enough. So if we take the research seriously, um, medical research that concluded that older students, meaning high school kids, are more like adults in their transmission and susceptibility to COVID, that's why we're concerned. So we not sure that the mitigation strategies we can reasonably employ. We think maybe, we're not sure that they're sufficient. So we think it may be wiser to start slowly at the high school. And notice I'm using words like concerned, we think it may be wiser, because we know the data and the thinking can change and evolve. But we want to push back a little bit early on the state and not instantly assume a full open for the entire district, uh, because that's what the state wants. Um, we have, if we really want to take health and safety seriously, then I think it makes sense to break our district down, uh, by school and look at which scenario fits the best. Uh, and we haven't made any decisions about that yet, but I am advocating that we have the flexibility to do that. Um, so we're hoping that the State Department of Education will consider it and even support, rather than a sort of a one-size-fits-all immediate assumption of what fall will look like. I just want to reiterate, the board has made no decisions at all. But we want the flexibility to break it down, site by site, look at each scenario, uh, given the best thinking at the time, you know, which might be two weeks from now. And who knows what changes between now and then, that then we determine which scenario makes the most. that then we determine which scenario makes the most sense. Because we're, we're being guided here, driven, if you will, by health and safety. And I know that we have read many emails from different parents. And, you know, their thinking is, is, is widespread. There's everything from, we shouldn't be doing this at all, you know, we should all be remote all the time, or should we should all be onsite immediately. So, you know, we understand that people have different points of view. And the best we can do as a board is focus on the health and safety information that we have, look at it carefully. I am glad the state asked for three different scenarios. And what we're saying as the Board of Education in Wilson, at least I'm proposing that we say this, is that we have the flexibility to look at each school and match the scenario to fit the needs of that building. So there it is. And that would be an introduction and to a larger document that has more of the nitty gritty details from Kevin and his team. And I think, you know, we're basing this proposal as a board and we should discuss it, you know, either before or after Kevin gets through the whole document. But listening to the reopening committees, hearing reports from that, talking to Dr. Smith, reading the research, hearing, you know, sort of input from different, different parents and families, I think we need to get a more flexible approach and look at it building by building. So that's, I'm sorry for being so long winded, but I wanted to be clear, not making a decision tonight, asking for the flexibility to determine the scenario building by building. Okay.
Great.
I heard thunder in the background, so I'm not sure that was great, but.
All right. So some of this you have, I shared with you last week. So I'll kind of proceed crisply through the beginning pieces here. So what we are submitting, you know, some of our own front matter that I shared with you, as well as the required pieces for the state. So this document is about 29 pages long. And again, pardon the repetition, I think it is important just so people who are at home and listening are really clear on, you know, what's here, where it came from and why. And so, as has been said multiple times, per the state of Connecticut, schools should plan to have all students in all districts return to schoolhouses for full time instruction at the beginning of 2021, so long as public health data continues to support. So for us, you know, we're looking at making sure we can implement health and safety measures for all students and staffs Debbie was just describing. We're establishing many operational protocols. We are addressing the social emotional wellbeing of our students and staff. And we are building or reinforcing our communication routines. So just to reiterate the broad practices and the mitigation strategies that we've discussed quite a bit. So in our schools, all students and staff will be required to wear face coverings while in school buildings. And this, you know, recommendations come from the CDC about who can't or shouldn't wear cloth face coverings. For our staff, we'll provide face coverings. We're inviting parents to provide face coverings for their children. We'll also have a supply of disposable masks on hand. A question came up yesterday about specifications around face coverings and we'll work with our local health professionals to nail that down specifically and publish that. With respect to social distancing, we can achieve having teacher workstations six feet apart from the students, but student workstations across the district. The most that we could achieve uniformly is three feet apart. Desks will face the same direction and then where tables are used, students will sit at opposite ends and will have a sneeze guard barrier in between. And then we'll also really focus on, to the best extent possible, grouping or cohorting students to minimize interaction with larger numbers of other students. We will have significant hand washing or hand sanitizing routines in place across the district. So all of our students and staff are required to wash and sanitize hands frequently. You know, and this is not a comprehensive list, but upon arrival, after using restrooms, before and after meals, you know, if a student, you know, sneezes or coughs prior to dismissal, and then, you know, wherever else it's most appropriate. We're in the process of installing hand sanitizers in every classroom and across the district. We intend to follow the Department of Public Health guidelines for the cleaning and disinfection of schools. And so we'll do that, that was the commentary about the need for additional custodians. And then, as we've already talked about, you know, we are accommodating the requirement here for three separate learning plans, in person, hybrid, and remote. With respect to student grouping or student cohorting, what we'll be trying to do at the lower grades is group students by class. And so, you know, cohorts depending on the grade level will be anywhere from 17, 18 to, you know, 20, 21, 22, et cetera. The purpose here really is to try to minimize the number of people that students come in contact with over the course of the day. As I just said, we can do this more uniformly at the lower grades. It becomes more challenging at the upper grades and is virtually impossible at the high school. There's also, as we talked about last week, a requirement that allows parents and families to not participate or to temporarily not participate in the in-person learning program. And so, as you heard earlier on in the night, we are planning an instructional program that we believe will provide a very high quality experience for those students who are unable to participate in person. And then as part of that, as we discussed, we're also planning for all of those different eventualities that might have students in sometime and out, you know, other times. And so we're really trying to simplify our approach, but make it as fluid and flexible and meaningful as possible. We continue to work on our communication plan, so we have a number of policies that need to develop. We need to publish clearly all of those various expectations that we'll have about operations and logistics in the building. And then, you know, we have infrastructure in place now that enables us to communicate broadly and quickly. So we have school messengers, our emergency communication system that allows us to communicate via text, email, and phone call. We have regular communications systems in place with newsletters and things like that. And then we also, we have our website, which will, you know, continue to update. In terms of some of the big buckets of operational plans, because of the numbers of people who will be driving, we do have to stagger arrival and dismissal just to manage traffic flow. So we will have plans published about, you know, who's expected to arrive, you know, through, in what window. We're working with our local police department to look at traffic logistics, so all of that's underway. Similarly, we made the decision to start the year by having students eat their lunches in the classroom. We're working with Chartwells. And right now, what we're planning to do is have Chartwells start the year and serve cold lunches. We think parents will be able to preorder lunches and that will make that work more efficient. And then we'll have plans in place to deliver those lunches to the classrooms. As we discussed, you know, we're going to try to take advantage of the outdoors as much as possible, weather permitting. Thinking about, you know, how and when we use outdoors, you know, that raises a whole other host of logistical concerns and questions, big ones around student and staff safety. And so, you know, again, we're going to work with our local police to look at potential areas where we could allow teachers and classes to be outside and then how we can manage the physical safety of those students while we're out there. As I mentioned already, class sizes will be in that, you know, 2024 range, probably a little smaller at the lower schools. And then I had mentioned earlier, you know, we're working on acquiring additional furniture to manage the social distance needs in our classrooms. We have a company working with us right now on foot traffic flow. And so what that will look like is when students are dropped off either by car or bus, there'll be signs guiding them about, you know, where to enter, where to move. There'll be signs directing them to sanitize their hands as they're coming into the building. We'll have in some cases, either staircases or hallways because of their width. That'll be one way to just help manage the flow of students around school buildings. We're working on our ventilation system, so we have contracted with a commissioning agent who has been in, again, examining all of our HVAC systems and ensuring that we have adequate amount of airflow and the right kinds of filters. We're erecting physical barriers in some of the larger spaces. And then we're looking at, you know, other portable and temporary physical barriers for classrooms. Another significant requirement here in the state plan is to create isolation rooms in each of the schools. So if a student is at school and develops symptoms or presents symptoms, we have to be able to isolate that student and then make arrangements for pickup. And there are specifications about ventilation in that isolation room as well as entrance egress. And so we're managing all of that. Developing plans to restrict the use of materials, so students don't have to share materials. At this point, we're also not planning on using lockers. And as I mentioned a week ago, we, you know, continue to have to run our safety drills. So we're reviewing with our emergency operations teams the best way to do that. So that's a recap of what I presented last week. I think as part of this document, it's important to highlight, you know, a couple of things. And so, you know, our staff is working very diligently, given all of the logistics and concerns and questions to get our schools open. But I want to say to everyone in the community, we all have a shared responsibility in keeping them open. And what I mean by that is simply, we have really good guidance from the state of Connecticut. And this state has been exemplary comparatively in the implementation of that guidance. And so our community transmission rate numbers are really low. And that's a really, it's a wonderful indicator of what's happening here in Connecticut. But as a community, all of us, parents, students, other community members, we really need to continue to take those mitigation strategies seriously. So we continue to reduce the spread and I think thereby doing that will be. So I think we laid out what we could go to, just what are the, you know, simple expectations that we'll have for everybody? So we will be requiring, you know, health checks of our kids. The culture change that we have to enact here is if people, whether it's students or staff, if they're not feeling well, even a little bit, they need to stay home. I'll call everyone's attention to a very recent change that begins tomorrow. Governor Lamont has revised the executive order on quarantines. And so now executive order, I think it's, I don't know if it's 7II or BII, I gotta confirm that, provides that any individual traveling to Connecticut from such a state shall self quarantine for a period of 14 days from the time of last contact with such affected state. So if people are traveling and they're traveling to one of those states on the advisory list, they have to quarantine for 14 days from the last time they were in that state. And so we're asking all of our parents and staff members to, to take a look at their plans and look at those plans in light of our school start calendar. Students, we talked about most of these things, face covering, social distance, quarantining. Staff members, it's the same. So now on to the specific requirements in the state plan. You know, a lot of this we've already talked about. So we have a plan for three models. You heard tonight about the, some of the details of the reentry units. We are implementing Schoolages, our learning management system. You know, we're designing an approach that we think is going to be flexible. And we'll also be gathering, you know, learning data so we can really target the kind of intervention our kids need. I spoke to you about the provision for temporarily choosing not to participate. The state issued guidance earlier today on that. And, you know, honestly, it didn't make a lot of sense to me. So, you know, I think our approach is better because we are considering all of those students who may not participate for not only a very variety of reasons, but also for a variety of time periods. The state requires the identification of a school liaison, development of communication plans and data collection. And so we've designated Maria Coleman as the school liaison. We are going to rely on our existing lines of communication. We have our website. I think all those pieces that we've talked about already are already in place and we'll continue to rely on. In terms of feedback, we continue to get letters in our general email boxes. We did create an additional email box, it's input@wiltonps.org. So it's right specifically to the district on a COVID reopening related matter. They can access that mailbox. And then certainly, you know, all of our phone numbers and things are published online. You know this already, but we have nine separate committees running that are working on these various aspects of reopening. So in terms of facilities, you know, some of those pieces we've talked about, I really, I want to highlight and underscore, and I do so in the plan. So whoever at the State Department of Education is reading this understands very clearly that with all students returning, six feet of social distance is not achievable in our classrooms. There might be two classrooms at the high school where we could get that, but that's it across the district. And so we settled on three feet of social distance between the student workstations. And we settled on that number based on the guidance published by the American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as the guidance from the World Health Organization. I've shared with you and I'll repeat it here because it bears repeating. I'm very concerned, especially in light of the study that was just released over the weekend from South Korea, that three feet of social distance in our high school may not be sufficient to really satisfy, genuinely satisfy some of those safety and mitigation strategies. So we, I think we need to think differently about the high school and really think about the hybrid model. I'm also, I think, we have some similar, although they're not as deep, but we have some similar concerns about our middle school as well. We are in the process of identifying auxiliary classroom space because we'll need to have access capacity should we need to clear a classroom because a child gets sick. We have plans in place to provide training videos for all of our staff and students and families around the various mitigation strategies we've discussed. We will have signs and messages clearly posted through the buildings. I think all of that is fairly clear. So in terms of daily operations, you know, again, we've discussed this. So this is just, you know, repeated here in the plan. But, you know, to the extent that we are able to, we will be cohorting kids in groups. And those are groups by classrooms for the most part. When you get into middle school and high school, there are facets of our program that limit the extent to which we can cohort at the middle school. And then I'm just saying it very directly, cohorting kids into high school is not possible. I think it's important, you know, Debbie wrote about phasing in various activities. And so, you know, what I'm proposing is that anything, any club or activity that's in person, we phase in after the start of the school year. You know, if there are activities that can occur virtually and online, then I think those are probably okay to run right at the start. We are going to restrict non-school based activities from school buildings at the start of the school year. And then, we'll continuing, Ed has a plan for the childcare operations. That's me a day ago. Here with child nutrition, because we don't participate in the National School Lunch Program, we're not beholden to the same very long list of regulations and requirements. But working with Chartwells and our food services director, we will make sure that we're in compliance with all of the necessary guidelines, as well as our local health official guidelines. Transportation, so, you know, this is repetitive, you see this information last week, but of the survey. Transportation, so, you know, this is repetitive, you see this information last week, but of the survey, about 26% of our families indicated that they would require the use of our school buses. The remaining 74% indicated that they could voluntarily transport the children to and from school. In the same way that we are sending out a supplemental follow-up survey to our faculty, we'll be sending out a follow-up survey to our families as well, just to nail down specifically, you know, who will be participating in person, who will be participating remotely, and then who will be utilizing our buses and who will be driving. Just like in school, anyone who rides the bus, whether it's a driver or a student, I will be required to wear masks. If we have, you know, children who are in the same family, I will allow them to sit together. The rest of the students will be spaced out so we can achieve social distancing. Just for your information, we presently operate 38 buses. Thirty-one of those have a maximum capacity of 71 and have 25 seats. The other seven have a maximum capacity of 83 and have 29 seats. So given the numbers, we think, you know, we can probably have a, a, a single child to a seat and accommodate social distancing that way. This next piece on health practices and protocols is really speaks to the training requirements. And so this has been kind of noted here in multiple places in this plan. You know, we will provide age-appropriate online training for all of our staff and students with all of the relevant safety protocols and mitigation strategies that we've been discussing. In terms of reporting illnesses and addressing vulnerable populations for our families, the school nurse will be the primary contact to report illness and to report COVID-19 related symptoms. For our staff, the Human Resources Department will be the primary contact. We will publish protocols for students, families and staff that include steps for reporting symptoms as well as reporting any known contact with a person who is diagnosed with COVID-19. So we've talked quite a bit about social distancing in the state requirement. You know, they specify, you know, some specific requirements around social distancing, which, you know, we'll be able to do. We're also looking at some of the adults who don't necessarily instruct or work with kids. So, you know, for example, some of the staff members in my office, for the summer, we've co-horted staff, so some of us come in on alternating days as a way to practice social distancing. Where we've been able to assign remote work, we do so. If we have those opportunities for some of those staff members, that'll continue. We attempt to avoid coming in groups wherever we're able to. You know, again, just, these are lots of just good health hygiene, social distance reminders, but encouraging staff to work in their own spaces. We'll continue to do all of those things. Again, lots of discussion here about specified in this plan that's going through the state. So it goes without saying that we'll develop and adopt a policy requiring face coverings. And so some questions came up yesterday when we were meeting with the Goal One Reentry Committee. And, you know, I think we'll have, you know, a couple of different policy pieces here. One is, you know, a blanket requirement for all who are able to wear masks will need to do so. We'll have to make particular provisions for those students who can't wear masks. And, you know, that, that's a concern. So I think this is going to be a concern everywhere. So we do need more state level guidance on that. So we can just be consistent in establishing the protocols. But for those kids who really can't wear masks, we will look at those on a case-by-case basis. So I think, you know, some of the strategies we talked about with regard to those kids was working with individual families to explore the use of alternative face coverings, maybe face shields or something else. You know, we also will have to explore in those situations, expanding social distancing in those spaces if we're able to, and perhaps adding additional physical barriers, again, just to enhance the safety for students who may not be able to wear masks. You know, the other group, as I see it, are, you know, students or families who can wear a mask, but may not want to wear a mask. And so we'll be drafting, you know, a policy that says if you choose not to wear a mask, this is a health and safety concern. And so then you'll have to participate in the remote, remote learning program. So we'll work on some policy language and have that ready for examination in the next several weeks. Again, anyone entering, you know, visitors as they may be, will also be required to wear masks. We are looking to limit the number of visitors in every way possible, you know, to our buildings. Per the state requirements, we do have a health monitoring plan and a containment plan. And so, you know, we're requiring all, you know, staff and students to self-monitor for observable illnesses, which include cough or respiratory distress. They'll need to confirm a temperature below 100. If folks are either tested positive or believe they're showing symptoms, or if they've had close contact, which is defined by the CDC, then they'll need to stay home. So we, you know, take a minute and we list, you know, the various symptoms here as well as define close contact. We're requiring, you know, everybody to self-monitor. And then we also spell out the new quarantine guidelines. The student self-monitoring protocols are exactly the same. So let me just move forward here to the next piece. We include, you know, protocols, these are taken directly from the CDC. So, you know, if you have COVID-19 or you suspect you have COVID-19, there's a series of steps you can take. And then, you know, we have a protocol for returning to work. And so, you know, that requires a quarantine of a minimum of 14 days. And in all of these, you know, we continue to work very closely with Barry Bogal and our Town Health Department. And so, you know, Barry is reviewing these plans and is weighing in very strongly on all of these various pieces. He is a, a key partner here in all of this work. So the State Department of it also required the description of a containment plan. And so I'll just review this briefly for you. Right, so the purpose of the containment plan here really just indicates an immediate response if an individual has signs or symptoms of COVID-19, or there is a known exposure or a member of the school community has a confirmed diagnosis. So if a person has symptoms of COVID-19 or has a reason to believe he or she may have COVID-19, or the person was at a school facility 48 hours or less prior to developing symptoms, the following protocol will be implemented. The person must contact the school nurse, if it's students, or the Director of Human Resources, if it's staff. We will handle all of the information with discretion and honor the confidentiality laws, rules and guidance. The school nurse or Director of Human Resources will immediately make contact with Barry Bogal, Town Health Department. If it's a staff member, the staff member will be sent home immediately. If it's a student, the student will be moved to the isolation room and then we'll make arrangements with our family members for transportation home. We do have a response team. And so that response team will gather immediately just to review the facts and then to coordinate the response. The next step, if there's an exposure, would be to dismiss all staff and students in the building and then to implement an initial shutdown period of at least two to five days. Right now, this is the guidance from the CDC. And so the purpose of that shutdown in the building is to investigate the extent of exposure, initiate the contact tracing and then allow for a deep cleaning and disinfecting of the facility. As part of that process, we would certainly send emergency notification to our school community and to all of you regarding the potential exposure and shutdown. And then we would transition to remote learning while school facilities are closed. And we'll continue to, and only stay in touch with the individual who's impacted, but also continue to work with the Town Health Department. And then, you know, publish information as necessary. So State Department of Ed requires information for, you know, you know, how will, you know, cancel classes, transition to remote learning and then publish reopening plans? And then using the systems we have in place, you know, we'll be able to achieve that with the guidance from the Health Director. The State Department of Health is supposed to issue some broad guidance around community transition rates that will help us determine district-wide if we should be in, you know, full-time in-person, you know, that hybrid model or the full-time remote. And then, of course, you know, we have to make our own judgment based on, you know, what we think we can do. So I've talked to you quite a bit about Schoology and the roles for Schoology. And then, as Debbie mentioned at the start here, so we have kind of generic descriptions of each of these three plans. And then we will, you know, come back to the table and really describe in more detail, you know, what those instructional models are going to look like. With respect to academics, you know, here, we're just making a statement of insurance assurances about how we will, you know, continue our special education program. You know, this is an area, you know, right from the start that our special educators, under the direction of Andrea and team, have done a remarkable job. And so we can fully expect that they'll continue to do so.
Kevin, can I, can I just interrupt? Go back to the hybrid model and telling us that, you know, more details are coming and I get that. So I just want to be clear for anyone listening, that the hybrid learning, we don't, do not have a schedule for that. And you're gonna, you're gonna be working on it, but we do not have one tonight to share, am I right?
Thank you. No, you're absolutely right. And just so people understand kind of where we are, we, we don't have a model. And, you know, there are two, as I've been reading and talking to, you know, other superintendents around the state and looking at, you know, what's happening across the country. There are two models that are emerging as, I think, the most popular models. So one is referred to as a 2-1-2 model. And in that construct, you have a cohort of students who are in, say, Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday, everybody is remote and the, on that day, the building is deep cleaned. And then the second cohort is in person Thursday, Friday. And then the other model that seems to garner a lot of attention around the country is this alternating week model. So a cohort is in one week and then the other cohort participates in remote learning for a week and then they switch. So we're exploring those models and, you know, in the coming days, we'll have a clear recommendation for the board.
Thank you.
Sure, so, okay, so the last couple of pieces here, you know, just a lot of details. But the short of it is, you know, we'll continue in the way that we have been to support our students who are on IP's and 504 plans. Similarly, we'll have supports in place for all of our English language learners. So, you know, those, at least broadly, those details are spelled out here. And then, as I think, you know, we heard from Kim Zemo recently, we do have plans in place and they continue to be developed to address the social emotional learning and the mental health and family support when students return. And so we've just laid out kind of the steps that we have taken or tend to take here, you know. So we have teams in place, there are multidisciplinary teams. And, you know, as students come back and we learn about, you know, particular concerns, we'll obviously address those as well as really prioritizing through the, you know, beginning with the reentry units that you heard Trudy and Karen talk about a little bit, fostering some of that, you know, classroom community that's so important for, for kids and teachers. And then I, the last piece here in terms of after-school activities, I kind of mentioned this already. We're going to start the year because we're going to need it with the childcare programs. We'll phase in as we're able to, you know, other programs. But I think a phased approach makes the most sense. We don't really run a career and tech ed program. So we took the opportunity just to spell out some of our, you know, protocols for, you know, how we're gonna clean and just manage some of our materials. Last piece here is on staffing and personnel. So this is work that, you know, Maria had just updated you about a moment ago. And so, you know, we'll ensure that, you know, we're complying with all of our regulations and regulations. We'll be publishing, as Maria named, lots of information for our staff about their rights and the protocols we're putting in place with respect to COVID-19. And then Maria will be that, you know, the primary contact for folks. That's it. And so just to kind of recap all of this, you know, you've heard kind of, you know, my concerns and you've named them yourself about the high school. But, you know, I think, you know, for us, the two key pieces in making those determinations really are, you know, the community transmission rate and then, you know, our own understanding of our capacity to effectively implement those mitigation strategies. And as you, I think, you know, understand pretty clearly now, those are different by, by school and certainly the high school stands out. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Kevin, and thank you for the hundreds of hours of work that that took, you know, for you and your staff. And I want to appreciate, you know, send a thank you out to the people who have been also sitting on the various committees. It's just monumental. I'm looking at the time and so we need to discuss this. And I just, you know, sort of want to get to the, the heart of it. Are there reactions from board members to the package, to the introduction? Or are there any outstanding questions? We know there are lots of details that are to be determined. And Kevin, you can see them in the, you know, you can see where he referred to those. Want to reiterate that whatever we decide tonight, it is not about a model or a scenario. It is saying, yes, we have three plans here and we want the flexibility to decide site by site as it gets closer, based on health and safety, because we think there are different needs for different ages of kids. Any comments, questions?
Yeah. Part of it, yeah, I, I mean, it really is exhaustive. When you look at the plans that the, the committees and all the hard work they've done and put together, as I sit here and listen to all of it, there's a part of me that just says, you know, the heck with it. Let's just reopen, bring the kids back, everybody wears masks, we're clean as, as appropriate as, as is called for, and let the chips fall where they may. I, I don't know, I, it is just so frustrating to try and figure out. There's so many unknowns and so many what-ifs. It's mind-boggling. And I commend Kevin, you, your staff, everybody who's worked so hard to pull all this together. It's mind-boggling. It really is. And I don't know the state appreciates what a challenge it's going to be for each of the school, the districts and the state to reopen and to try and do what we all want to do. Let's have the kids back in the classrooms, facing the teachers, interacting with each other, doing the, the, all the things that are important about being in school. I'm just flabbergasted, I really am, I'm sorry.
No, I think, I think a lot of people share your feelings, Glenn, you know, about the overwhelmed piece and, you know, mind, you know, just staggering. Other comments, questions?
Well, yeah, again, one other, it's interesting to note that we have more participants tonight in this meeting than we've had in our last, I don't know how many meetings. We have over 107, 107 participants tonight. Clearly, there's a high level of interest in the community about what we're doing, how we're progressing. We've gotten so many messages from so many parents. I mean, it, it, I, the interest level and the uncertainty that surrounds this community about what we're going to try and do, it's, it's mind-boggling. I'm sorry, I'm just, I, I think Kevin and his staff have done a phenomenal job. think Kevin and his staff have done a phenomenal job putting all of this together, trying to deal with all of the different, you know, issues that the state has laid out for us. The contradictory messages that we get from the state are like, what? And you're to be commended, Kevin, you, your entire staff, Maria, you know, every, everybody, for the amount of work Fran and what she's doing with Schoolology. I'm convinced that we'll make it work. I'm convinced that we would do the best possible job that we can do with all the different considerations that we have. And I just commend every, the entire staff for the effort they're putting forth.
Yeah. And I, we're doing this very carefully and methodically and comprehensively. So again, it may lack speed sometimes, but it is better to be thoughtful and comprehensive than to rush through. And certainly, you know, we certainly appreciate the input from the parents and community members. And, you know, people are anxious and invested and hopeful about the fall. So this is a huge step to just kind of get to this point with this many details. And, you know, for all three scenarios, to have such good tools, to think about what the resources that are needed to line that up. So I think, given that it's July 23rd, and as big a task as this is, that we are, again, you know, we're making very good progress. We are not there yet. It is far from that. But we're making good progress. And we will find out the hybrid schedule next week. We'll find out more about cost. We'll be updated as soon. Maria, if you do your survey August 3rd, when do you think we could hear, we need to hear more about that? Do you know what the timeline is for that?
So the timeline, the, the survey will be open for one week. And so I would be able to share out on it the following week, which would be the 13th of August.
Okay. All right. That certainly is cutting it close.
It is. I could probably share, I apologize.
No, go ahead.
I could probably share preliminary results on the 6th, because it'll be close to closed. And so I can share the preliminary results at that meeting and then share the final results, results at the following.
Okay. Do you think you could send it out before August 3rd?
Well, I can, you know, one of the things that we talked about in our staffing committee was just the need to give, I mean, it would really be next week to send it out. So, I mean, we could certainly do that. It was just.
Okay. No, I get it. Yeah, I get it. And I, and the other thing is, Kevin, am I right? The state will come forward for sort of guidance and pronouncements. What I think is, I understand the State Department. So again, it's hard for me to follow it. But I think all these plans from the districts get to the State Department tomorrow, and the state reviews them. I don't think they put a stamp of approval on them. I'm not sure how that works. But after the state review, there'll be some announcement more specific about what I think the State Department feels most or districts should do or would be able to do by school open. So they'll be more definitive. And I think that would come in the next couple of weeks. So Maria, maybe that's also why you need to kind of hold off on staff questions. And I think we've done our part here as a board by pushing back and saying, you know, there's some limitations to some of our sites, and we need to consider that carefully. So we will have the discussion next week about, more about the hybrid model, and more about perhaps which model matches which site, and see if we have some consensus around that. But for tonight, we need to approve the submission of the descriptions in this document, not because we're picking any one of them, but we think that it's a good work in progress. It satisfies the state requirement. The thinking that the staff has put on, put into answering the questions makes a lot of sense, although we do not have a definitive model yet. And that's okay. So any other, any further questions or comments? Or are we ready to take action?
Yeah, but I just wanted to say one thing. I know Glenn was using a vigorous speech, but I don't think we throw in the towel and send everyone back to school. And I just wanted, wanted to know, we're being so thoughtful and strategic. And thank everyone in the community who's sent emails. We really truly read every single one of them. So I hope people keep them coming in. And some of them have great ideas that we hadn't thought of. So please keep those coming.
Well, Mandy, it was just my frustration at what we're trying to do. Yeah. No, I, you know, it's just, it's overwhelming. It really is. And I hope the community understands that, that, yeah, the very first consideration we have has been at the top of the list. It's number one, is the health and safety of our kids and the students. And that means that we've got to take that as, as the driver. No matter what we do, that's got to be the driving force.
And I think that has been. And that's in our intro letter as well. So are there any other comments? Can we, is there a motion to approve submission of the document as presented by Dr. Smith with the intro letter from the, from our, from us, from the Board of Ed?
Yeah, so moved.
Thank you, Glenn. Second, Gretchen, thank you. All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any opposed, any abstentions? All right. Thank you. Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. We are running over. So let us see if we can address the calendar very quickly. We've all had time to look at it. We are giving, well, Kevin, go ahead and summarize it. And then we'll, we'll see if we're ready to vote.
Quickly, I'll just share my screen one more time to recap what we're up to here and what we're proposing. So as you know, several weeks ago, the State Board of Ed had enabled districts to shorten the student instructional year by three days if those days were used for professional learning at the start of the year. So what we're proposing to do is to make the 26th, 27th, and 28th half days, but half days only for a single grade level at a time. And so, for example, and I would just offer this as illustration only because the principals will make the final determination about which grades on which days. For the 26th, at Miller Driscoll, we could have pre-K K back, Saturday middle grade three, middle brook age six, and the high school grade nine. And then, so those teachers would work with those kids on that half day. And then the rest of the instructional staff would use the time for professional learning. And then we would cycle through all of the grades over those three half days. And then all students would be back beginning August 31st. And then there are no other substantive changes beyond that. The breaks remain in place. The last day of school also remains unchanged.
Okay. Is there, is there, are there any questions?
Yeah, I move acceptance of approval of the calendar as presented.
Okay, discussion. Jen, did you have a question?
I do have a question. And just to clarify, on a half day that our child goes, that's the only time that they're being instructed that week.
In that first half week of school, correct? Yes.
So they have their half day in their office. I'm like, we're trying to do remote.
No, 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 because the teachers will be engaged in, you know, planning and professional learning.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. It's been moved. Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mandy. All in favor? Aye. Raise your hand. Any opposition, any abstentions? Okay, that's been approved.
Are you going to send out a, I just think it's important we get this information out as soon as possible on every outlet possible. Are you going to send an email with all the updates?
And tomorrow. Yep.
All right, great. Okay, Kevin, while you were offline, we approved the Board of Ed meeting calendar.
A question there. I think there may be a typo because it has under F, our future business and information items. The next meeting tentative Thursday, July 20th, it said on the agenda. And that should be, I think, the 30th. Is that correct?
I believe it. It got corrected because at least, because mine today said the 30th.
Oh, it did? Oh, I appreciate that. Okay, fine. Great. Got it.
So I have, again, just tentatively, you know, I've been the monumental task that we're all invested, scheduled a meeting for every single Thursday. But it's tentative, if there are weeks that Kevin does not, you know, feels that there's not enough information to bring us together, then we won't. But I do think next Thursday is important because I think as much of the planning that we can get done now that takes board action, the better. And then we can get more into the implementation and the hiring and the communication and the orientations and all, and trainings and all of that that have to, have to take place. You know, it's getting into crunch time for the big decisions. And then we move into iteration phase in August, early August. Okay. So any more comments from the public, Lucia? Do we, I think, do we lose?
No, no, I just was making another check. No, there are no more public comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Having finished the agenda, it is 9:25. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, all staff members. Hope you can get some sleep tonight. Thank you, board members. And thanks again to the parents and the public who are so well with us. So thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night, Deb. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.